We have a quorum, but I know our member, member masters is on her way over. So we will get started. We have a quorum and that gets us to our pledge of allegiance. And for that, can we have our now senior student board member? Please lead us in the pledge.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, in the visible of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. I need to make a change to the agenda before we adopt it. So I need us to move the board reports, which is listed as six, to be moved to where the director's report would typically be, which is section three. So we will hear from Dr. Nama McKinney about the director's report during that time. So again, I need to move the board report to the director's report.
You're moving it?
I'm so sorry. I need to make a, I'm making a motion to do that. Second. It's been first and seconded, sorry. So sorry. I know that we have another change that we need to do the agenda. And so for that, member O'Hara Block, will you please remind me again which one you need to move from consent?
Basis.
Basis. Okay. So we now have another change. I apologize. So I need a motion for us to adopt the agenda where board reports were director's report and we move off basis policy research and do that one separately. So I make that motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been first and seconded. All those, I see what I've done wrong. I'm so sorry. It's been first and seconded. Do we have any discussion? Okay. All those approval of this, please raise your hand. I am sorry for the confusion here. All those. Okay, that's everyone. Thank you so much. All right. I apologize. I'm just eager for us to get to awards and recognitions and I know that we're on a time schedule, so I apologize for how that was clunky. For awards and recognitions, it's one of our most exciting times for our board meetings. I'm going to turn it over to our director of schools, Dr. Adrian Battle. We have a lot of awards and recognitions within our schools that we're going to be talking about today. Always a wonderful time. And then also she's going to share some additional words as we are having our last meeting as the board as you see it in front of you. So we will have some additional comments as well. Thank you.
But first, because they would have it no other way, we have some outstanding student athletes from a variety of sports, including a couple we don't hear about very often that we're going to celebrate tonight. And so it's been very exciting to read and hear and tune in, to watch our very own student athletes and scholars represent Metro Nashville Public Schools and Nashville. So I'm going to jump right in. Students, as I call your names, please come up to the podium and face this admiring audience and then we'll take a group photo at the end, but I want to give each one of you an individual spotlight. So first up is Gabe Tolentino, a junior at Antioch High School. So Gabe is a member of the Antioch Sumo Wrestling Club who won San Diego and won the national championship on June 1st. So, so Gabe won the national championship on June 1st in the junior heavyweight division at the United States Sumo Federation's National Championships. Now, Gabe will be heading overseas for the World Sumo Championships next week in Poland to compete for the gold medal.
Amazing.
So stay right there, Gabe. Next is Abby Pendjakin, a junior at Hume Falk Academic Magnet High School. Come on up, Abby.
Don't meet the hardware, let it claim.
We like that sound. Abby won a silver medal at the USA Archery Tennessee State Outdoor Championship in June. Her victory came in the under 21 barebow event. Abby, we are so proud of you. Thank you for representing the best of Metro Nashville Public Schools. Also with us tonight is a junior from Hume Falk Academic Magnet, and that is Elliot Parker. Come on up, Elliot. Now, this is also amazing. Elliot was a runner-up in the state tennis championship for class AA at the T double S double A state championships as a sophomore last spring. Congratulations, Elliot. And we have two outstanding track and field athletes to celebrate tonight. Aleah Vernado, a junior at Martin Luther King Junior Academic Magnet School. Come on up. So Aleah won third place in both the 100 meters and the 200 meters for the 15 to 16 age group at the AAU Junior Olympics in Greensboro, North Carolina, just a few weeks ago. And finally, I hope she's arrived if she hasn't already. Kamora Lee Williams, a senior at John Overton High School. Kamora, if you're here, come on up. I know she was on the way. Okay, so I'm going to share her accomplishment and then when she gets here, because I think she was en route, we'll acknowledge her. So Kamora Lee Williams, again, a senior at John Overton High School, who has excelled at the AAU Junior Olympics in Greensboro. Kamora Lee is a Junior Olympics champion after winning first place in the 200 meters for the 17, 18 age group, and she also won second place in the 100 meters. She also set a new Tennessee state record in the girls 100 meters earlier this summer with a remarkable time of 11.37 seconds. So give it up for Kamora Lee. I'm so proud of these student athletes for the skill, commitment, work ethic, and discipline they've shown in this wonderful range of sports. So, okay, students, if we could have you and your coaches and any family members come on up, we'd love to grab a photo of all of you to really capture this moment of celebration. Congratulations again.
You're welcome.
And board members, if you have a student represented, please join us up front.
Should I take my shirt with me?
Oh, yeah.
Snap me back to the phone, right?
I'm not going to jump in. This should be.
What is her bracelet?
I wasn't being noisy.
Oh, that's surprising.
She always comes.
Okay, we ready? Everybody's looking here. All right. One, two, three. Bunch of cameras coming.
Y'all are a big deal.
Sarah.
I don't know who that is.
Mrs. Kelly.
Yes.
How are you?
Thank you.
You all right?
Yes, I am.
Your key cramples.
Thank you.
Thank you, board.
He was. Yes, that was him.
So congratulations again to our student athletes. Again, keep representing and keep just, keep your best on display. Congratulations. All right, so Chair Elrod, if you don't mind, as an extension to our recognitions and acknowledgements, as we all know, we have two of our finest board members who are rolling off the school board this evening. And I just would like to take an opportunity to help honor both of them before their final meeting with us this evening. They're always welcome to come back. We're welcome. So I'll say to both Board Member Masters, Board Member Gentry, we've been through a lot together and gotten a lot done together as well in serving our students, our teachers, our support staff, our families, and schools over the past few years. And I'm grateful for everything that both of you have done and for all the support that you've given me. We're in a different place as a district than we were when we started on this journey together. And there's a lot of good work for all of us to be proud of. In fact, if, if there was an opportunity to roll off, this is the best season because there's so many great accomplishments and successes that you will take with you. A strong, unified, dedicated Board of Education is so important, and we've had that. And these two board members have played key roles in making that possible by working so well with their colleagues and with me and my team. Dr. Gentry. So let me talk about each of, I'm going to talk about each one of you separately. Ms. Masters, I'm coming to you in just a moment. Sharon is tenacious. She's thoughtful, she's analytical, and she's tough. She won't be pushed around by those who want to hurt our schools or degrade the quality of the work happening every day in the classrooms in her district, which stretches from Nissan Stadium to Jolton and beyond. We've seen some tremendous improvements at our schools throughout District One in recent years. In fact, I remember our first conversation in your vision for District One. And with her understanding of systems and processes from her day job at an even bigger organization, HCA, Dr. Gentry knows how to ask the right questions about what's needed and how we're going to get there. Dr. Gentry has done this work a long time through multiple board configurations, multiple board dynamics, and multiple superintendents. And she's consistently done it with grace. That's not easy to do, but Dr. Gentry, you have done it so well, so well, over the last 16 years. Thank you again for your leadership and your service. Board. Board Member Masters, I think everybody knows, I've known Board Member Masters longer than most of the other board members. She was a parent at one of the first schools I worked at. So she's seen me really grow and develop over the years. You have been such a strong advocate for the school staff, students, and families that you've represented in Goodlessville, in Madison, in East Nashville, and in Englewood. We built a beautiful new Goodlessville Elementary School during your term and proudly opened it a year ago to better serve the students and families in that area. I have appreciated your partnership throughout that entire project, including, I must add, the addition at Old Center. Board Member Masters, I appreciate your good humor and your willingness and your eagerness, in fact, to fight for our students and our educators. You have been a part of a board that has changed in leadership and dynamics and in so many ways, and you have been a consistent force in bringing our board, my team, and this district together. Again, thank you for your continued fierce advocacy and for leading with a smile and with all the passion you have inside of you. We've had a very good board with these two in the mix, a board that works well together, works well with, again, me and my team, and understands when and where their support, guidance, and advocacy are needed. And while I guess we have to allow a few men in the room on the board, we got a little man every once in a while, we welcome them. We're going to also miss Sharon and Emily from this excellent all-women group. Thank you both for your service and thank you for the heart and the love for MNPS and for our community that you've brought to this work every day. I say this all the time to my team and I'll say it again this evening. I am the most fortunate and most humbled superintendent in this country to have worked alongside the two of you and this entire board. Again, thank you. I love both of you, and this is not the end. Thanks.
All right. Our student, well, one moment, please. Hold on, we have our student here, so we're going to go back. That's very important.
Yes, it is. Thank you for coming. We have been waiting, awaiting your arrival. Ms. Kamora Lee Williams, you come on up front. Yes. And I'll remind everyone, everyone with Kamora in the room, she is a Junior Olympic champion, y'all. That is no easy feat. She won first place in the 200 meters and she also won second place in the 100 meters as well as setting a new Tennessee, state of Tennessee, record in the girls 100 meters earlier this summer, again, with a remarkable time of 11.37 seconds. And lastly, I will remind everyone, we also celebrated her at the end of the school year for all of the state victories and accolades as well. And so you're just seeing a few of her medals, not all of them. So again, congratulations. Let's take a quick picture with Kamora as well. Chair Elrod, Overton staff, family, please come on up. We know our student athletes cannot do this work alone, that it takes your support as well.
Glad that you were able to make it. Awards and recognitions is always such an exciting time. We obviously have exceptionally talented students, always so impressive, just it never ceases to amaze me. And you will hear more about our, board members are leaving us and how we want to celebrate them as we get to our announcements. But that gets us to our board report, and for that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Bethina Nama McKinney. She's going to go over our evaluation, particularly our response to it. Thank you, Board Chair Elrod. Had to get, process that, sorry. Thank you so much. So we're going to go over, we were interrupted in our earlier meeting because we ran a little late. So we're going to do the, the most important part of our board evaluation, which is the feedback that, that our board members have given for Dr. Battle in the evaluation process. So I'm going to skip ahead really quick. It's okay. So just to reset up really quick in the evaluation timeline and board considerations, Dr. Battle's evaluation, the board evaluates Dr. Battle four times a year with a, in a formative process, and then she has a summative evaluation once all of the state data and information comes back to us. We are currently in the, as you see highlighted, quarter four evaluation process. This is a compilation of quarter three and quarter fours' progress reports that we have received from Dr. Battle, which forms our semi-evalu, semi-annual evaluation feedback that we received. And during our semi-evaluation board feedback, we do that publicly to make our community aware of what that evaluation process looks like. This will be followed by a summative evaluation. We are still waiting on the final academic data and reports from the Tennessee Department of Education, which will occur sometime in September or October of this year. And all of this completes the 23, 24 school year evaluation process. So we always work in the behind, which means that we cover a lot of this material throughout the school year, throughout our board meetings. You'll hear a lot of the information that we discuss, but the valuation process is really retroactive to all of the information that we're getting, just to kind of center everyone in where we are. Okay? So when we look at considerations, some of the things that we really want to acknowledge that we have seen positive improvement in and that we want to celebrate, not just us as a board, but we also want to acknowledge the national recognition Dr. Battle and her team has received for MNPS and the great work that they're doing here. As you know, we had the Harvard-Stanford study, which gave national recognition, and in this particular category around literacy, but it was literacy and numeracy, so you're going to see a repeat around that. We also looked at the impressive results from our scholars portfolio, that's our promising scholars, our accelerating scholars, and the enriching scholars program, and the impact that it has had on literacy growth across our district. We've seen strides in closing the achievement gap among subgroup populations, with the largest being among African-American students. We've seen positive intersection using various leadership strategies and routines which have contributed to the increase in fidelity of literacy implementation across the district. And we've also seen a commitment to continuous improvement through all types of best practices, improvement strategies, and implementation for best practices across schools. And we really want to highlight the fact that Dr. Battle, you'll kind of see it come up a lot of times throughout our meetings, you'll hear it, repeat it with her staff, and it's kind of her mantra, know where you are, but don't stay there. And that is a testament to the great work that we are seeing around literacy and the improvement in literacy across the district. As we look at the board and in looking at all of this thing, all of these things that we want to highlight, we also want to see how we can continue to support through our literacy budget investments around support that high-quality instruction, instructional materials. As you know, we've been able to really play in to support the budget around giving complete literacy, which we haven't been able to do in the past. Our scholars portfolio, which we see is helping to support students in that intervention space, professional development for our teachers and our leaders, and, and looking at research-based practices. One of the things that we want to continue to learn about, again, with equity always being at the forefront, is that ongoing equity initiatives, which continue to close the great work that we're doing around closing achievement gaps among subpopulation groups. Okay? And we're not saying all because some of those groups have been closed. We just want to highlight those that we continue to look at. Same thing around numeracy. Again, we highlight the Harvard-Stanford study, the national recognition around our accelerated growth in mathematics. Again, the work that the scholars portfolio is contributing to helping with that math growth and success, the closing again of our achievement gaps and the continuous improvement models that we are implementing across the district. Again, how can the board support? We want to look at how with continuous numeracy budget investments around those key indicators that are working to really see the growth and success that we are seeing within our students. And so as a board, we want to continue to see how we can support with those budget investments and prioritize that. How can the board continue to learn about, again, ongoing equity initiatives and continued supports for specifically math across our district? We're in the first year of implementation, so how do we continue to look at that across our K-12 spectrum, including our secondary math? All right? So for socially emotional learning, some of the things that we want to highlight is that decrease in chronic absenteeism. When we, when I first came into the district a couple of years ago, that was one of our focuses, especially coming out of the pandemic. And the work that Dr. Battle and her team have done across the district to really work to reduce chronic absenteeism rates in the district. As a result of reducing chronic absenteeism, we have been also able to improve in satisfactory, perfect, and overall attendance rates. And looking at how that collaboration between attendance and SEL supports have really set the stage and moved the needle for students. And so we really want to acknowledge the great work that is happening across the district in that space. How can the board support, again, around funding, continuous SEL budget investment support, and what that needs to happen and that continuing to be at the forefront as a board to help get the resources and that we are bringing on through the university MNPS. The amount of scholarships that we are able to offer students across the district has really been a game changer for families and really looked at that support there. So we want to acknowledge the great work that's happening around our scholarship and our university MNPS initiatives. Again, if we're looking at the ways in which the board can support, we want to continue to look at the implementation around the MNPS reimagined work. We want to continue to communicate and support the university MNPS initiatives and bring access to that, especially at younger ages, so that we can continue that continuum. One of the things that the board wants to continue to look at is that continued reimagined implementation of uniform strategies. We see that that is working and continuing to learn more about it so that we can communicate it with our community is something that's extremely vital for us. When we look at the all-focused outcomes, one of the things, couple of the things that we want to acknowledge is the ESAR funding and the ESAR bridge. As you know, districts across the country have dealt with ESAR gap, where they are having to lay off employees, just cut programs and things like that. Thanks to the great work, relationships and partnerships with Dr. Battle and her team, and I'll also throw in the board too, we were able to really work with the mayor and Metro Council to close that gap and continue the vital programming that has worked for us to get students back onboard. And so since we're not having to deal with an ESAR cliff, we're really working to have that ESAR bridge that has supported us throughout continued success throughout starting this year. Also, we want to acknowledge the leadership framework. We hear a lot about the leadership playbook, the implementations and the process that Dr. Battle and her team are using to really train and uplift and support leaders across our district. And we want to acknowledge that great work, because we know that great leaders lead to great schools. Also, the ongoing equity work in building partnerships to meet the needs and improve outcomes among various communities, and the record increase in the field substitute opportunities from 27% to 52% using classroom associates. There was a lot of doubt about whether that program could work, and we're seeing the return on investment and how that has really been able to work and be successful across our district to continue classrooms without disruption. And so that has been a game changer for our schools and for our school communities. So ways in which the board can, that we want to continue to support is ongoing outreach, again, for the equity roadmap as we continue to implement and connect with communities and community organizations, continue to look at investments and support for innovative initiatives such as the classroom associates, and to be able to truly support those initiatives as they continue to happen. And then one thing that we want to continue to learn about as a board is the relationship between those equity roadmap strategies and student outcomes. And so in final, those are the areas that we really want to acknowledge the great work that Dr. Battle is doing. We want to continue to see ways in which we can support Dr. Battle to continue to provide these seamless, sorry, to provide these seamless programs that we see are having a strong impact for student and student outcomes, and really pushing the needle across our district. And then areas that we wanted to, you know, just looking at areas as well, that we want to continue to learn more about, that continues to pique our interest so that we can continue to support as a board for Dr. Battle and across the district. All right. So with that being said, we do want to open it up for any questions. Final words for, and I'm going to actually throw it to Emily and Dr. Gentry, if you have a few words as outgoing board members. You don't have to. Just about the evaluation process and the great work that's happening. And if not, that's okay?
I don't know if I've mentioned this on the board floor before, but when I was at a Tennessee School Board Association gathering, it was actually the board orientation that I did like three years later than I was supposed to. There was a lot of talk about doing director evaluations and about the fact that there are still some districts across the state that aren't doing it, or that talked about, you know, how difficult it would be to do it yearly. And I was like, oh, we do it quarterly. And I think, you know, the process that Dr. Gentry got started, and then Berthina, that you continued, it is, it sometimes doesn't feel manageable just because we all have so many other things, but it is manageable. I mean, we can sit down, we can read through everything that's been done, make our comments. I hope Dr. Battle finds it constructive and helpful. I think the fact that we do it quarterly is really, it really indicates the level of engagement that we as a board have with the big picture of what is happening. Because we can get pulled into so many of the small individual things, not that individual things don't matter, but I think it really, in addition to being constructive and helpful for Dr. Battle, I think it's also been really instructive to us to really understand the work that's going on in the district. So that's kind of just what I wanted to say about the process as a whole.
Thank you.
I just, I really want to thank the board for embracing the process, right? So when I first started here, the evaluation was bizarre 16 years ago. To say that's just a whole understatement. And then carrying it and getting us to, you know, the board, that board at the time, just to start thinking differently about it. What was interesting is this board didn't balk at the four times, right? And we weren't even doing it four times then, right? So there was just, you know, it is a lot of work. And I, again, just commend this group, this board, for understanding the importance of the feedback, right? The thing we've always said is you can't expect improvement if you're not monitoring, right? You get what you inspect, not what you expect. And so I just want to thank this group for embracing that. So I'm going to, I'm going to leave out here with some, a couple of unpopular statements. This is going to be my first one, possibly unpopular. Yeah, here we go. You've got a director that has been sitting here for now, going into her sixth year, and we've not taken a second look at our contract. I know we did the COLA, as we did that for the teachers and others, but we've not taken a look. And if you look across this country at directors that are walking away from jobs, directors that are coming in with unproven records at different salaries than the ones that we are paying today. I know pay increases are never a comfortable conversation, and a board tends to shy away from that when we have teachers that are also looking for more money. But I would encourage this board to take a serious look and be intentional about reevaluating the contract that we have with our director of schools today. She will never tell you, and she's never told me, but I find it very hard to believe that with the outreach we've just talked about, that we get from other school districts and from across this country and from outside of this country, tapping into this resource that we have, that there's not been other offers that have been placed before her. But she's here because she wants to be. And as we start to bring families back into this district, as we get into space, we passed a policy on artificial intelligence, y'all. So this job is about to change drastically. It is changing, and it is about to change by leaps and bounds for the person who sits responsible for what our students are learning, what they're exposed to, and how they leave our district prepared to do the next best thing. So that would be my ask and my encouragement, is that we do take a look at that and then consider that as we think about the future budget.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to comment?
Yeah, just really quickly. I recall when Dr. Gentry introduced this new tool for evaluating the director of schools, because the other one was, and you say it was interesting, I say it was the most antiquated tool I've ever seen in my life. So this is by leaps and bounds, a huge improvement. And to your point, Emily, I have had those conversations with other districts where they are shocked that we evaluate our director on a quarterly basis when they are barely getting through a year in most cases, if at all. So I commend both you, Dr. Gentry, and you, Dr. Naba McKinney, for making sure that this tool is continued to be updated and utilized at the, to the best. It is, can be a little bit cumbersome sometimes, but it is necessary. And to Dr. Gentry's point, one of the things that I learned in the business world is what isn't measured, isn't managed. So if you are not measuring what your, our one employee is doing, how do we effectively manage her across the board? So, and to Dr. Battle and her entire team, this speaks volumes to what you do on a regular basis. You make us look good. I'm just saying, y'all make us look really good, and we are so thankful for that. But Dr. Battle, thank you for your hard work, continued work, and continued support. And you are absolutely correct, Dr. Gentry. I will, I've told Dr. Battle this on several occasions, I lie about her all the time. When somebody says, what's going on with your director of schools? Oh, she's awful. You don't want her. Don't come over here looking for her. Don't come over here looking for her. You don't want anything to do with her. But you're absolutely right. We would be foolish to think that other districts around the country are not looking at her. Absolutely. So thank you, Dr. Battle, for all that you do, and thank you to the executive team for all that you do. You guys are amazing. And I don't know what we would do without you, because I think I harass most of you on a regular basis, so thank you.
And with the sake of time, I just want to say, thank you, thank you guys for taking the time. I really, really applaud and want to echo what has already been said, but really want to applaud our board members for taking the time to review the feedback that Dr. Battle sends to us and provide your comments and your feedback to her, whether it's in person or in written form, so that we continue to move the needle for kids across our district. I also want to thank my teammate, Ms. O'Hara Block, for the work that she does. I can't do it by myself, and I think that we have been a great team over the last couple of years doing this work for the director's evaluation. It is sometimes a heavy lift, but is a necessary lift, and so I appreciate that. I also want to thank you, Dr. Battle, for always being responsive. I know four times a year, an evaluation can be a heavy lift as well, but the time that you take to respond to comments throughout, through all of your feedback, through your director's reports, through your written feedback, verbal feedback, and just taking the time to respond to board members and their questions and concerns, and really pushing the needle for students, I just have to thank you for that. And thank you for all the work that you're doing to lead your team and across the district. And I know sometimes feedback cannot be easy, but it is necessary, and it continues to help push the needle for what we're all here for, and that's the kids in Metro Nashville Public Schools. So with that being adjourned, we will, with that being said, I will adjourn, sorry, with that being said, I will, no, I won't adjourn the meeting, I will adjourn this portion of it, but I do want to say, oh, I'm not adjourning anything. Well, that being, I will end this discussion, this particular discussion. I know, right? No, sorry. But I will say before, with my last comment, keep in mind with the timeline, we do have the summative evaluation that will occur in September or October as we receive all the data from the Tennessee Department of Education that we're still waiting for from last school year to complete the evaluation for Dr. Battle so that we can move into this school's year's evaluation process. So if anyone has no further comment, thank you.
Erin, did you have a comment? Okay. I also want to say that I appreciate to our audience as well that we were able to go over that and have the amended agenda. Doing the director's report is one of our most important parts of our job, and that's because not only are we evaluating our director of schools, or the superintendent, as it's typically called everywhere else in the country, but it's also, we are, we have a large responsibility to manage as well. And a lot of us have not been managers before, not had managers, or there's a spectrum to that. And so making sure that we're staying on top of that information, I appreciate you letting us have that time to go back to this, as we were running out of time this afternoon. And I wanted to give respect to the work that is done by our staff by getting that information to us quarterly, not just this time, but other times, but also so us as a board can stay informed and also respect the time of our own committees. So I appreciate y'all letting me do that, and of course, also to my colleagues. That gets us to public participation. We have three members of the public that have signed up, and it may not be coming up because it's three members, that have come up to speak. You have two minutes to speak. There is a timer right here on the corner. Thank you. Thank you, Member Tyler. She's my new Vanna White. On that timer, you will see at the end of it, when we get to 30 seconds, it'll turn, I think it turned red, I apologize, and it'll beep at you if you go over two minutes. I do feel like I need to warn you because it is a bit abrupt. You do not need to say where you live for privacy reasons. It is helpful if you tell us what district you're in. And we will start with, the first person that I have on my list is Gan, G-A-N. No? All right. The next person I have is Tawana.
TJ, good evening.
I was going to say, I know you as TJ.
Hey, y'all, ain't no trouble in my house, okay? Look here, ain't no trouble in my house. So, Dr. Battle, you know, I'm old school, and Cheryl, and Dr. Gentry, I've been taught you say thank you when folk do something for you, right? So last week, baby, watch the clock for me. Last week, I was able to go to a PD out of my 28 years in this district. That was the best PD I've ever sat in. I almost took it over, it was so good, and I said, I can't wait. Now, I tried to get Dr. Battle, some other teachers to come up here and do what I'm doing tonight, but they said, uh-uh, I'm scared. I said, I ain't bad, I'm from Nashville, but I want to tell y'all something. I come to say, Dr. Battle and the board, Chris, all of y'all, everybody in the room, I hope some students are going to play this back. This ACT master prep. I was sitting in there, Dr. Battle, all I could hear was every student known, and I said, hope. Yeah, hope in it. Hope 21. After I realized, Dr. Battle, this don't cost you no money. HR, go home and go to sleep tonight. Look here, we don't need teachers, because guess what? Master prep gives the kids an extra teacher. We don't need Snapchat, because we have Snap Course, which gives each kid a tutor. Do you hear me, student? Now, you don't have to worry about being in the hall, because the kids have their own teacher in their study hall. Chris, I got excited. I didn't need to come ask for help or an assistant. And it allows the teacher like me to be the guy on the side while everything is happening. So I'm coming to say thank you again, board member and Dr. Battle, because really, we don't need no money. I'm not talking about what we don't have. I want everybody to know what we do have. Could y'all help me real quick? Let me hit a pause. Could y'all say every student known, hope 21? We hope for every kid, y'all, to end up with a 21 by the time they graduate. And Chris, that means money, 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 money. Everything in life, as I tell my elementary kids, is M&amp;Ms, not candy, math and money. Nothing's funny when you can't count your money. Oh, I've learned a lot with elementary, y'all. But look, I just want to say thank you, and this is the best. And I found out it opened up to ninth grade through 12th grade this year. So look, there's the, there's the buzzer, there's no excuse that we can't get our scores
uh-uh, I'm scared. I said, I ain't bad, I'm from Nashville. But I want to tell y'all something. I come to say, Dr. Battle and the board, Chris, all of y'all, everybody in the room, I hope some students gonna play this back. This ACT master prep. I was sitting in there, Dr. Battle, all I could hear was every student known. And I said, hope, yeah, hope in it. Hope 21. After I realized, Dr. Battle, this don't cost you no money. HR, go home and go to sleep tonight. Look here, we don't need teachers because guess what? Master prep gives the kids an extra teacher. We don't need Snapchat because we have Snap Course, which gives each kid a tutor. Do you hear me, students? Now, you don't have to worry about being in the hall because the kids have their own teacher in their study hall. Chris, I got excited. I didn't need to come ask for help or an assistant. And it allows the teacher like me to be the guy on the side while everything is happening. So I'm coming to say thank you again, board member and, and Dr. Battle, because really, we don't need no money. I'm not talking about what we don't have. I want everybody to know what we do have. Could y'all help me real quick? Let me hit the clock. Could y'all say, every student known, hope, 21. We hope for every kid, y'all, to end up with a 21 by the time they graduate. And Chris, that means money, 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 money. Everything in life, as I tell my elementary kids, is M&amp;Ms, not candy, math and money. Nothing's funny when you can't talk to money. Oh, I've learned a lot with elementary, y'all. But look, I just want to say thank you. And this is the best. And I found out it opened up to ninth grade through 12th grade this year. So look, there's the, there's the buzz, there's no excuse that we can't get our scores up to a 21 on the average. But we on the move, y'all. I know the bugs went out by.
Thank you, TJ. That brings us to our, our last speaker, Ms. Christian Bugs.
How do I follow that? Well, you know what I would say? Hello, everyone. My name is Christian Bugs, an MNPS graduate, former teacher, parent, and now the phenom, I can't call myself phenomenal, the phenomenally proud CEO of PENCIL. Again, PENCIL stands for Public Education Needs Community Involvement in Leadership. And I would say, Ms. TK, even if you think you all don't need more money or don't need more resources, PENCIL is here to offer you all as many resources as possible. I'll do what, I'll do what I can, I promise you, because we were quite literally created for MNPS. So I tell Dr. Battle all the time, we serve at the pleasure of the district. If at any point you all need something from us, if there's a way that we can better connect adults in our community to you all, we would prefer to do that. I really want you all to know that we're excited to continue partnering with you and we want Nashville's community to see us as a soft landing spot for supporting and championing public schools. I want every adult in Nashville to know that they can lend their time, talent, and treasure, yes, you've heard it before, to our educators and students. I thought about saying so many different things. I'm gonna go off script because this is still a little emotional for me. It's always beautiful to see you all. My first grade son is thriving and that is because I've trusted MNPS for the last four years to teach him. I'm not the best mother because sometimes I work just way too much, but knowing that he's getting everything he needs at school has been beautiful and so helpful for me. I will also pivot and say, wifey, Chair Rachel Ann Elrod, it has been a pleasure to see you, to work with you, to get to know you. I wish I could say something to all of you all, but I know I only have 30 seconds, so I'll say, Emily, it was a pleasure to sit next to you, if only for six months. I'm sorry I had to leave you so abruptly. My dear friend, my birthday twin, my mentor, Dr. Sharon Dixon-Gentry, this is not goodbye. It's not goodbye to any of you all, but it's certainly not goodbye for me and you because I look forward to welcoming Dr. Gentry to the PENCIL Board beginning September 1. So a lot of different words to say. Pencil is here to serve you all. We appreciate the work that you continue to do. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. All right. That gets us to our governance issues. Our agenda has been adopted. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
For, make sure that we are removing action item A.
Two.
No, it's A, it's A1, B2.
B2.
All of the pieces. All right, so do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
All right, second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been first and seconded. All those in favor? All right, that's unanimous. All right, I need a motion for A1, B2?
Motion to approve, uh, B2, okay. Motion to approve Basis Policy Research Contract.
Second. Been first and seconded. So sorry, is there any discussion? Should I have asked that before? All right, seeing none?
Are you recusing or are you? You need to say that, you're recusing.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna recuse myself from this particular vote. Thank you. Thank you. All right, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All right, that's everyone and one recusal. Thank you so much. All right, we've gone over our board reports. That gets us to announcements. For announcements, we're gonna do a little bit differently than usual as there is probably a lot to be said as it's the ending of when there were nine. So for that reason, I usually go by district number. Instead, my thought is to go kind of around, but I'm gonna save Emily and Dr. Gentry and myself towards the end. So, Dr. Gentry, you will be the last person to speak. I hope that's okay. So before we do that, I should ask, school board member Tran, do we have any, do you have any announcements? Bless you.
Lost in game.
Turn your microphone, please.
There's a Lost in Game on Friday, USA themed, so that's pretty cool. And the Bell Tower Scholarship had also opened up last Thursday, I think, and the deadline is October 15th. So if you're eligible, apply. Money is money. That's all I'm gonna say.
All right. That gets us to Member Erin O'Hara Block. I was just gonna go around if that's okay with you.
I, I, I thought I had a minute more in my head to prepare while other folks were talking, but I'll just take a moment to say thank you. And to be one of the first other board members to say thank you, I won't say too much, but Emily is a person who I look at very regularly when I look up and during presentations and during voting and during other things. And I will very much miss seeing your face over there. And I appreciate so much the work that you have done, in particular, to support our LGBTQ kids and families and staff. As you know, it's also an issue near and dear to my heart and I'm, I'm so grateful for your leadership there and in so many other ways. And also for your support as a, as a working mom, which many of us are, and working moms in the district with kids, this can be very challenging and you have offered support on a number of occasions. I'm grateful for that. And to Dr. Gentry, who I've had the imminent pleasure of sitting next to, I'm just, I'm despondent, truly. I'm gonna take the picture and I'm gonna keep, I'm gonna keep the picture with me so that I can whisper things to the picture and the picture will tell me how the Robert's Rules are supposed to work and, and really truly just lead from, the, the leadership from your heart for all of our kids, for, in particular, the kids in your area. And I, I just feel like I've learned an incredible amount from you, both personally and professionally. And I'm incredibly grateful. So thank you.
Member Mays?
Yeah, before I get into my comments, I just want to say, I don't know if she's still here, but our incoming junior school board member, student board member, oh, there she is, stand up. That is Ms. Hannah Nguyen. She is our incoming junior board member and we are gonna be excited to welcome her. Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for being here tonight, Hannah. We'll see you soon. And with that, I, I was smart enough to actually type out my comments because I would be all over the place. So, I did, I absolutely did, because that's the nerd in me. Okay, so let me begin by reiterating what my colleagues will express. Thank you both for your unwavering support and commitment to the students and families of Metro Nashville Public Schools. Your dedication has been instrumental in shaping countless positive and impactful decisions. Sharon, my first impression of you was during a school board meeting that I was watching after you had recently joined the, the Board of Education. Your presence was immediately compelling and I vividly remember the beautiful scarf you wore at that meeting that day, which caught my eye. From that moment, it was clear that you had a deep understanding of your role as a school board member and a genuine passion for advocating for our children and our district. When I eventually met you in person, a couple of years later during my first term on the board, it was evident that you would continue to, to be not just a remarkable advocate, but also an incredible colleague. Over the years, you've become much more than a friend. Serving alongside you has been a true joy and getting to know you on a personal level has been equally rewarding. Your commitment to doing what is right for our children, even when faced with opposition, has been powerful, a very powerful lesson. You have taught me the importance of persevering in support of our students and families, regardless of any unfounded criticisms or negative feedback. Your understanding of the assignment, the role, and the essential goals of academic growth for all students has been a guiding light and I'm deeply grateful for the honor of working with you. And I will add, and I didn't write this down, I will add, it has been my honor to serve as your, the auntie, the by proxy auntie to your girls. I met them when they were little babies and now they're almost grown women and I'm so thankful for you and I will forever count you as one of my dearest friends. And Emily, my conference partner and fellow advocate, our journey together in a learning environment has been a privilege. Your positivity and unwavering support have been a beacon of joy and your infectious energy as our dance party enthusiast makes you one of my closest friends. Serving alongside you and sharing our personal stories as mothers has only deepened my appreciation for you. You are truly a treasure. I thank you both for being integral parts of the queen bees or the honeybees. While we work, while we look forward to welcoming the boys to our table, the experience of being part of, of this history-making, all-woman Board of Education has been nothing short of extraordinary. And so on this last night of the honeybees, I thank you both for always being true to yourselves and most especially, true to our babies. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you. Dang, she should have went last.
Knocked her out of the kidding.
I know. So I do want to start out by saying, we are a phenomenal board. An all-female, and I just have to emphasize, an all-female board with a female superintendent. And over the last few years, we have kicked butt and taken names. And we have the data and the support to prove the work that we've done. While I'm glad and happy to welcome in our guy members, this is instrumental, this is also historic to have an all-female board and have it in the year on the anniversary of women's right to vote.
You're here.
Right? And so this is amazing feat. I do want to say, I came in a little bit differently on the board where I was appointed, then kicked off, and then elected to the board. And the level of support that I received from both of you and all of the board members at that time was truly phenomenal and amazing. And I just want to thank you, we, Emily, you and I have had a lot of phone conversations. We've had some tears together, we've had some laughter together, and it's just been really great getting to know you and your phenomenal work and your commitment to students across our district. And Sharon, you were my ride and die. When I thought I couldn't do it, you whipped me into shape and, and was my mentor to get on board and do what's right by kids and to always make that the focus of what I did as a board member and to keep that front and center. And so I just want to thank you for being that leaning ear that I could call when I wanted to say something, but I couldn't say it the way I wanted to say it, so that I could come correct and say it the right way. And so I just appreciate both of your input and your impact on our board and, and the work that you have done and the team that we have created right here. So I'm sad to see you go. Guys, I'm happy to see you join and I hope we continue this phenomenon of having a really amazing board as we move forward. Oh, one other thing, I'm sorry. One other announcement, I just want to thank, we had our, McGavick High School had their dedication ceremony for their football field this past Friday. We also had a foot, our first football game against Hillsboro, different, different conversation. But we, we are really excited and thankful for the work that, for all of those who led the work in getting our new turf for our football field. It looks amazing. Hopefully, we're gonna win some games and, and make it happen, but we are just really excited as a community for this amazing contribution to McGavick High School. So thank you.
Member Fane?
I know, this is so strange for me too. Strange for me too. First and foremost, I want to say I feel a little slighted because I didn't get the same experience that everyone else got. I only got a good, what, three, four months of YouTube and hearing everybody talk about you, seeing the work that you do, because I have been able to see some of the projects and the things that you have done come into fruition, I feel a little slighted. So you will get texts from me, you will get emails from me, you will get calls from me. I will still need your support. Okay? All right. And thank you all for your service and all that you have did and I'm sure will continue to do for MNPS and our kids. Being a parent firsthand, I see just how important it is, you know, the work that we all continue to do. And I, it's nothing but the utmost respect and well wishes on your future endeavors. And last but not least, I got to say Pearl Cone plays Friday night against CPA. We will kick off John Merritt Classic this year. We have been, been, we will be a part of the festivities. We will be tailgating and having a good time. TSU band will be performing as well at the game on Friday night. So if you all want to see some real football, come on out to Pearl Cone Friday night. And I will, and I will pass, pass the baton off. Thank you.
She said she wasn't ready, but I think she was more than ready. Member Tyler?
Ooh, this is difficult. First of all, those are fighting words right there. I just, I want to thank both of you ladies for, like Erin was saying about seeing Emily across the way, I often look at Sharon and I love the way your face says what my heart is thinking most of the time. I'm not the best at, at keeping that mask on, so it's really good to see that I'm not alone in feeling some of these feelings. And I really appreciate your willingness to speak up and say what you know needs to be said in a way that not many of us could do. So the fact that you're willing to stand up and put yourself out there and open yourself up to the responses that you know you're gonna, you're gonna hear, that's very brave and it is the example that we should all be following. Because if it's the right thing to say, you should say it. So I appreciate your courage and your audacity. Thank you. And to Ms. Emily, whom I have gotten to know so well, I will miss you. So, Zach, you got some big old shoes to fill up here? I look forward to you working on your snark game because I'm gonna need it. And I appreciate your willingness to talk me through the thoughts of how am I going to say the things I want to say in a way that makes the most sense? And your willingness to hear me say unfiltered thoughts and accept those in a way that, especially as somebody who is more introverted than extroverted, I don't, it's not natural for me to put myself out there. And you are clearly the opposite of that and you are very good at opening yourself up and opening up your heart to other people and opening up your joy to everybody else in a way that I'm a lot more reserved. And so you've been a great example.
Vice Chair Player?
I'm gonna go last, so I can go second to last because I'm a vice chair. First, Glencliff will have a cluster bash on September 13th from 4:30 to 7:30. So we hope we come out, support the Glencliff Cluster and show them some lovely love with one of the greatest high schools in the land. To my colleagues, to Emily, I first met you through the Emerge program. You are definitely my Emerge sister. And seeing you do that, going through that program, I knew that you were something special and I couldn't wait to serve with you and you're the first Emerge sister that I got to actually to serve with. So, so I just want to thank you for being able to get to know you and being part, walk through that journey with you. But I love your, your spunk, your passion, your creativeness, your love for the arts, your love for students, and that you brought a lot of joy to this position. You have took some serious hits and you have come out with it with grace, like in all the ladies in the place with style and grace. And that wasn't easy and I am proud of you for standing through it, persevering because you took one of the ultimate sacrifices to do that with you and your family. And just to know that I am proud of you because a lot of people would have not survived it. And the fact that you stuck to who you are, that, that it was acknowledged and I was very proud to serve with you and I'm going to come and bother you even more after you leave. So, but no, but thank you for your service. Thank you what you have done for the arts, for the students, and even the resolutions you brought to make sure that every student is loved, ignorant knowledge, and they have a is loved, ignorant, knowledge, and they have a place here, no matter who they are, and that they can be their true authentic selves. So, thank you for making that. And that would probably be one of your lasting legacies, that I didn't know the impact until I walked in the schools and saw the symbols where every kid, you know, all means y'all. And that we really saw, and people came up to us after and say, "Thank you for passing that resolution, seeing our kids." And that's a great legacy to pass, that knowing all students are safe in our district because of your heart and your talent. To Dr. Gentry, I was one of your first harassers when I worked at CIU. And I used to harass Dr. Gentry about the workers, the parapros and the workers that, here at Metro Schools. And when I first encountered Dr. Gentry, one of the things I noticed said, I said, "She is wicked smart." And I think one time I was talking to Howard about it, and that's one of the first things I said. I was like, "Howard, she is wicked smart." And everything I had, I truly admired you because seeing a lot of leaders come in here, the institutional knowledge that you had, but your ability to see the whole land and the sole district, the whole institution is a rare talent and skill. And to be able to analyze it and measure it that the way is objective, but fair, but also through a lens of diversity and making sure people that are invisible are visible. And that doesn't come often. And that hasn't come often in this field, in these careers, in leaders. And that you have set true to your morals. You've always been truthful. And I was very, when I came on this board, I was very excited because I got to see this serve with you. And you're the one of people that I've truly admired through my career, my political career, and I actually look up to you because your wisdom is unparalleled and unmatched. And thank you for your service on the board. It wasn't an easy tenure. Seeing it time and time again, and I'll tell people, but she knows her job and she knows the role of the board. She may not do it the way you want to do it, but she's doing right by the students and she's doing right by the district. And you need to honor and respect that. And I'm glad that throughout your tenure, you were able to personify that and to do that, that you gave someone like me a role model to do this job well. And I hope I make you proud in doing that and following your sweet steps. So, thank you for your service. Enjoy your time. I'm going to harass you just because you're going to be making funs. But yeah, you probably won't pick up the phone, but I'm going to harass you every now and then. Are you coming to the meeting? But, no, but honestly, thank you for your wisdom, your forethought, your reflection, and be able to impart wisdom on us as we govern, of how we should govern well and the success of this board is by the wisdom that you have imparted in us. So, thank you.
Thank you. So, it seems especially fitting, as we say goodbye to Emily and Sharon and prepare to welcome Zach and Robert, to say that being locally elected is really difficult. Being locally elected for most positions is really hard, but especially on the Board of Education. And particularly considering when you are serving one of the largest districts in the nation, that's in a rapidly changing city and in a state that often targets our school district in every way but funding. It can be difficult. And it oftentimes, as I say about our roles, spreads like kudzu. It will take over any space that you give it, personal, professional. It'll take anything you give it and quickly. You won't even know it's there until you got to chop it down. But it is paramount to recognize kind of what our job responsibilities are. And the main one is to champion our district. And both of these women have done that. They have both done them in similar ways and unsimilar ways. We had a reception earlier, and I said some of my remarks then. But Emily, a cornerstone of her work has been her focus on LGBTQ+ issues and that her advocacy has not been limited to just those words and those concerns. But she's put it into tangible actions as much as she can in this state and within our scope that we're able to do. That in itself is hard. It requires ingenuity, requires dedication, and of course, just a deep responsibility and respect to the issue that you have. But that has made a huge difference in the lives of all of our students, as many of my colleagues have said. And in addition to that, Emily has also been a staunch advocate for other broader equity initiatives. And like Ms. Mays, I wrote mine down because I knew I didn't bring tissues. So, I'm trying to be a better preparation. And I guess that gets me too. I have been so grateful to become your friend. So, Emily has championed policies to ensure our schools are safe and welcoming environments for all students. She's also done the same for board members. I really appreciate as a friend and colleague, the times where you have told me difficult things, but you've done it from the place of love and respect and working together. And that's hard to do, y'all, particularly when you're working in things that are so personal and full of conflict. So, it's been such an honor to get to know you. Thank you for your service. And yeah, you're not getting rid of any of us. That is just how it's going to be. So, thank you for the goodwill to our group. Thank you for your governance and of course, your courage because you've had a particularly difficult four years of stepping in during the COVID pandemic. Then I've had the extraordinary privilege to work with Dr. Sharon Gentry, though admittedly, it's not been for 16 years. It hasn't, but at times it's felt like it. Because again, it gets crazy hard. But Dr. Gentry has worked for MNPS and been on our board for 16 historical years, and she's been chair three different times. Those are really impressive testaments to her responsibility, to how she takes that job seriously, how other people think she takes that job seriously, how she does that job with that seriousness. And trust me, she is not joking around when she does that job. I did not know Dr. Gentry, just like Emily. I didn't have the pleasure of knowing you before we were here. And I was terrified of Dr. Gentry. I wanted her approval so badly, y'all. I wanted her approval so badly because she was so eloquent, so strong, so smart, so interesting, and also very interested. She was very analytical, which I also like to think of myself. And so, I thought, ooh, I have a friend as well. But I so desperately wanted to be with Dr. Gentry. And Dr. Gentry, though having a really heavy, hard job, also having two young children, and of course, a bevy of service inside and outside of being on the board, she gave to me and she gave to all of us. And that is a big part of our service. So, I want to say that we are so grateful to have the opportunity to serve with both of you. And I'm going to have to swallow again because I'm thirsty crying and I have my throat, my voice is going. But we are so proud of all the work that's been done, whether it's been for your equity needs, for LGBTQ students and all students, to whether it's also been for the underserved communities that you serve. And of course, getting the flowers and getting the recognition that those communities and neighbors have needed for so long. And I know that probably felt impossible at times. But you did it. It took a long time, but most good stuff does. So, all that to say, excuse me, it is with heartfelt thanks to both of them that you've been so dedicated to all of us and to yourselves. We appreciate your attitudes and of course, your work with us. And I'm sorry for crying, but I will miss you. And so, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Masters. I'm sorry.
Done a lot of crying alone in the bathtub this week, so I think maybe I've gotten it all out already. I don't know, that's my crying spot. It was always my hiding spot during COVID. You know how everybody had your hiding spot in your house? Mommy's in the bath, I'm still in the bath. It's a two-hour bath, I know. It's a long bath. I didn't, I started trying to write something and y'all know what I started writing about. It was seahorses. That was the first thing that came out on the paper. I ended up writing an entire essay. I'll send it to y'all later. But it wasn't necessarily pertinent to what I want to say tonight, which is, it's just been an honor. I did not know what I was getting myself into as a, you know, seven-year PTO president, having been really involved in the schools, even being raised by a teachers' union representative. I didn't know the depth and breadth of the work that I was entering into with this. And I want to thank all of you. I also want to thank Dr. Sevier for the journey he would go on with me every time I would say, "Well, what about this policy? Like, let's start, let's dig in. Let's start doing something with this." And I appreciate that so much. So, it has been very different these past two years than it was my first two years on the board, as y'all know. And you also know that I'm a big believer in if we can talk to each other, we can work together. We don't always have to agree and we don't always agree. But I think now with this board, the thing that I kind of want to share with anyone who's listening, and especially with all of y'all, is that we can disagree and then we still text each other pictures of our kids in their Halloween costumes. You know? And we disagree and y'all still send flowers when my mother-in-law and then my father-in-law passed away. And all that support is just always there. You know, Berthina might have to pull me back from the microphone at one event and then Cheryl tells me, "Get up and say it, do it." I've just felt, I felt very supported and I have appreciated the way we've all been able to work together. And I think it's, I said this before, I think we have for the past two years been a pretty perfect example of the way democracy is supposed to work. Not everything has turned out the way I personally wanted it to, but I have felt very much a part of it. And I do think we have time and again represented a collective voice as a body that has represented students well. And I'm so appreciative of that. The other thing I wanted to say is I just wanted to quote from a few banned books. I thought I would just go out on that. Yeah, that's what I'm going to, that's what I'm going to go, that's what I'm going to go out on. It might come back to seahorses yet. Before I start that though, I want to say something to Sharon directly too. Because even when we were still wearing masks and we were behind plexiglass, I could look at her, and sometimes I knew I needed not look at her because it was going to make me laugh or make me, because I knew I was going to see myself reflected. And I just, I've appreciated those moments. You are a little scary sometimes. I'm going to give you that. And I love it. And I, you know, have the utmost respect for it because I know it comes from that, not just deep passion, but deep understanding of the work and what needs to be done. And I'm just, I'm glad that my four years were one quarter of your time that I got to be here with you. Okay, I'm going to read some banned books now. This is what's going to happen. The first one is from "The Hate U Give" by Angie Thomas. "That's the problem. We let people say stuff and they say it so much that it becomes okay to them and normal to us. What's the point of having a voice if you're going to be silent in all those moments you shouldn't be?" I like that one for us because we've definitely not been silent. I really like this one, Toni Morrison, "Beloved." "He licked his lips, 'Well, if you want my opinion, I don't,' she said, 'I have my own.'" I think that's, I think that one's real good for this board. Anne Frank, "Diary of a Young Girl." "It's really a wonder that I haven't dropped all my ideals because they seem so absurd and impossible to carry out, yet I keep them because in spite of everything, I still believe that people are really good at heart." And y'all know I do believe that. I can talk to anybody. Y'all know that. Even when I was advocacy chair and I was going up to the legislature to kill a mockingbird. Simply because we were licked 100 years before we started is no reason for us not to try to win. I think that one is very appropriate to Nashville and what we are facing in our schools today. And then finally, from Seahorse, "The Shyest Fish in the Sea" by Chris Butterworth. "They twist their tails together and twirl gently around. The two of them dance until sunset and then she puts her eggs into his pouch." I appreciate all of you. Let's all keep reading banned books or having them read to us on occasion. And y'all just call me if you need me because I'll be around. I will be serving on the PTS at Stratford High School.
All right, Dr. Gentry.
I'm going to start this way first. Nothing this board has been able to accomplish has been without you all. Nothing. I have not seen a group of people that show up for students the way you all show up for students. And I have always, I think I've said it here, I know Howard has heard me say it about his staff. When we ask somebody what they do, I want to hear the same answer. My job is to provide a high-quality education experience for every student in MNPS. I don't care if you're sitting in the CFO seat. I don't care if you're sitting in HR. I don't care if you're Chief of Staff. I don't care if you're a Chief Academic Officer. I don't care what your title is. And each of you shows up in your role with the same job. And that I have appreciated more than you will ever know. Makes it so much easier to make the hard decisions when there's competence in the work. And when I watch other boards, when I watch and read other articles, I know that what's not behind that director is competence, commitment, understanding the assignment, knowing how to show up, bringing your A-game every day. Because at the end of the day, you know, behind every spreadsheet, behind every curriculum, behind every partner, behind every computer, behind every application, behind every federal grant application is a student. A student who needs your A-game. And your A-game is what you bring every day into this space in a way that is exhausting, it's draining, it's, "What the hell did I come to work today?" sometimes. But at the end of the day, you got a bunch of students that recorded a record about y'all. That wasn't, that song wasn't about us. It wasn't even just about Dr. Battle. It was about you. Because we, every student, wouldn't be known if we didn't put the right leaders in buildings, the right teachers in classrooms, the right technology in front of them, the right curriculum in front of them, bring the right partners to the table, fund the way we need to fund. We couldn't do it. We couldn't do it. And so, I want you to know that you are appreciated. I'm not just saying thank you because somewhere I learned that appreciation exceeds that. Thank you is for a task. Appreciation is for you. It is for you. And so, I hope that you see the fruits of your labors beyond just scores and numbers. That what you do is as equal as important to that student athlete as it is to that SEL experience, to that EL student, to that gifted student on the one end of the spectrum and the gifted student on the other end of the spectrum. That you're necessary, that you're needed, that you're appreciated and that we know that you could have, use these talents other places, not just other school districts, I mean, other places, other organizations, other corporations, the talents that you have brought here because they're not about just the tactical and the technical that you bring. There is a skill there that how you do what you do is what is making the difference for our students every day. So, thank you for showing up and keep showing out. Because I know that MNPS is not done. It is just scratching the surface. It is just scratching the surface of the things that we're going to accomplish, the, the ceilings we're going to break and what it means to be a district, what it means to engage for and on behalf and with students and parents and families, what it means to support and have internal professional development. I actually had an organization come and send me a proposal, says, you know, we do PD for school systems. I had to call direct, I've never heard this before in my life, what do they do for us? Because just like TJ said, you guys are doing a thing. And I'm going to say my second unpopular, potentially unpopular thing today. I got them listed. They're numbered. This is number two. The other thing I want to say for the record is that we, I, I don't see the need, as I sit here today, for us to look outside of this district for the next director of schools. Shouldn't happen. It shouldn't happen. The intentionality with which you all have developed yourselves and developed other leaders, the leaders that are sitting, that sit behind you and do that work, the consistency with which we are doing professional development today, the consistency with which we are seeking the best, seeking the best makes no sense. So we don't need a TSBA. Is that what they're called? We don't need a TSBA. Search process. We are being intentional about building bench strength. And you've got bench strength sitting right in front of you today. You people over here. I wore, you know, I, I, I'm intentional when I got logos. My shirt today, if you haven't noticed, it says amazing women. And that is you. I, I jumped a gun. Hold on a second. I'm back up. I'm on a, I'm on a, my, my 10th man, Cameo. It's my 10th man. Cameo's been here since I showed up. Cameo will do what's done for me. I know, because I, I know Cameo, I'm difficult. Ain't have no time. I don't bring my unit, my little robes back. I probably got three of them in my house. I'm going to tell you that right now. Y'all looking for the robes? I know this is a budget issue, sir. I'm pretty sure it is. I probably got three robes. I'm going to bring them back. I'm, I'm going to come back with you. But, and, and David, by extension, you get, you get into this too, but I got to stick with my girl. I can forward, you know what I do? I don't, I don't get in the mix. I let you do your job. I will forward an email, I forward voicemails, and I don't, sometimes I don't even have to put a message with it. The next thing I know, it's been addressed and it's been handled. So I appreciate the, the, you were talking about institutional knowledge. He was here when I got here. So the understanding of who's on first, who I need to call, when I ask, how does this need to be handled? If the answer is not at the tip of your fingers, you take the time to find it and point me in the right direction so that I'm able to point our, our families in the right direction for the support that they need. And so I want you to know that you are appreciated for the work that you do and the support that you provide to this board. You, you have hung in here with us through a whole lot of churn when not only did the future of the district not be, wasn't clear, your role wasn't clear. But nothing can explain it other than your commitment to the students of this system. It's not about this board. So you, you need to understand that you have been vital to our ability to get to every student known, that you bring your A-game every day to this role while growing a business, while being all the entrepreneurial things that you are outside of MNPS, that you show up for us. You show up for us when sometimes it has looked like we have not shown up for you. And you don't complain about it. You don't ask questions about it. You seek two seconds of role clarity, just tell me what it is you need me to do, and you get it done. And so thank you so much for showing up every day for us, showing up every day for our students, and just holding it down in a way that, you know, I don't know, somebody would have probably like talked about me by now, and you don't even talk about me. I do have like three robes at my house, y'all. Anyway, now to you ladies. We, and Cheryl's been on the receiving end of this too. We say a lot about the all-female board, but there's a thing there. There's a couple of things I want you to remember. That when Emily and I are gone, guess what you all will be? Female. Nothing changes in how you show up at this table. There is a, a, a quote that I read and I wrote on a post-it note, sits on my desk. When it gets curled up and dried and blurred because I've rubbed on it enough, I write it again and I stick it on my, and it's a very simple quote. "You've proven it to be true, and this is the only ask I have of you as I depart this seat. Do not let a wishbone grow where a backbone should be." Do not let a wishbone grow where a backbone should be. This is all our students need from us. This is what our families need from us. This is what our teachers need from us. This is what these individuals here need from us. Because they could, they, they've got what it takes to do the work. We've just got to hold the line. My football analogy for you, TK. We've got to hold the line. That's what we're here to do. This is, and when I've said it before, I think each of you are giving me the experience of a damn good board. You understand your role. You have a voice and you use it. You come prepared, right? That's what these guys need and that's what our students need. Nothing changes. I need you to show up the way you have been showing up since the day you sat at this table. Nothing changes. We don't, we can't go backwards. I think that's been the theme the past couple of weeks. There's no going back. There's only forward. And then when I alluded to the AI and that this job is going to get harder, it's only going to get harder regardless of what happens in November. The world's moving a whole lot faster. Our students are showing up with a whole lot of things that we never thought we'd have to address as parents, as members of this board. I need you to keep bringing your A-game and hold the line. Don't let a wishbone grow where a backbone should be. Appreciate you.
All right. Be there no further business until all the ladies in the place with style and grace. This meeting is adjourned.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again or for more information on this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.